I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. Today is Monday, November 2nd, or November 1st, 2021. The time being 7:00 PM. The meeting of the Greensburg City Council is called in order at this time. Please silence all electronic devices. To comply with Title VI of the Civil Rights Act of 1964, the city requests that participants in this meeting complete a voluntary anonymous survey. It is available on the table in the back of the room. Amy, would you please call the roll?
Jamie Kane?
Here.
Kevin Fleetwood?
Here.
Rick Ensweller?
Here.
Diana McKenzie?
Here.
Darrell Poling?
I did know that Darrell would be absent this evening. He called to inform me of that. You all should have received a copy of the October 4th minutes, 2021. Any edits, additions, or corrections? If not, we take a motion to present tho- or accept those as presented?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made by Vieta, seconded by Rick. We will have to do roll call votes because Jamie is joining via Zoom. Amy, would you please call the roll?
Jamie Kane?
Yes.
Bah, sorry, Kevin Fleetwood?
Yes.
Rick Ensweller?
Yes.
Diana McKenzie?
Yes.
You all should have received a copy of the minutes for October 4th's public hearing, 2021. Any edits or additions to that? If not, we take a motion to approve as presented.
So moved.
For second?
Motion's been made by Rick, seconded by Jamie. Um, for, Amy, would you please call the roll?
Jamie?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Diana?
Yes.
Moving to old business, the first up is tax abatement 2018-13. We had a public hearing on that. Um, council members, um, any questions? Mr. Whitaker and Mr. Cooley are here again this evening if you do have questions for them.
I would, uh, I would just note from a procedural standpoint, we've, there's been three resolution proposals presented to you. Uh, two of them were drafted by me, one of them was drafted by Mr. Cooley and submitted by Mr. Cooley and Mr. Whitaker. Uh, we have numbered those to make it easier for the record to reflect the vote on each one. The, uh, the one presented by Mr. Cooley has been numbered-
2021-12.
2021-12. Uh, and the basic gist of that is a finding by this body that there has actually been substantial compliance due to the fact that the business located in addition to the liquor store is, uh, a construction headquarters and that that is a substantial compliance. Um, I would note that that particular resolution, uh, if you are so inclined to approve, uh, does probably alter future years because it does provide that as long as the building makeup doesn't change, it would continue to be substantial compliance. So it would not necessarily be something that you would be revisiting because you would be making a finding that it wasn't substantial compliance. Uh, the second one, which is Resolution 2021-13, uh, is the one that I drafted that allows for the abatement based, uh, on a finding that there was not substantial compliance due to the nature of what's in the building, but that due to, uh, circumstances outside of the control of Mr. Whitaker and/or, um, his reasonable efforts to, to comply, you are finding that, uh, the abatement can be allowed. The final one is, uh, Resolution 2021-14, which is, uh, simply upholding your, excuse me, your prior ruling that, uh, he is not in substantial compliance and that that failure to comply is, is not excused by either his efforts or factors outside of his control and that the abatement is being terminated. Um, the first one and the last one both are, would have ongoing effect. Uh, the second one, Resolution 2021-13, is probably a more temporary because every year he would have to file a new SB1 and you would, you would be revisiting per se, uh, that rule. So, those are the three that have been presented. Mr. Cooley, did I, did I misstate anything?
I don't believe so. That covers it.
Thank you.
Sure, quick. The one that you said was to cancel, was which one, 12 or 13?
To cancel completely is 14.
Chris, is it still your recommendation to go with 2021-14 based on your interpretation of Indiana Code? I just want to clarify.
Yes, it is my interpretat- it is my recommendation to terminate based on my interpretation of the Indiana Code.
2021-12 was issued today at 1:48 PM this afternoon.
That's correct.
Is that correct?
That is correct.
Which means that Councilman Poling, Councilman at large, has not seen this resolution. Is that correct?
I, I don't know if he has email access where, I emailed it to you as soon as I got it. So, I don't know the answer to that question.
Well, I would make a motion to table this matter until he was able to look at the, at the added Resolution 21, 2021-12.
Motion has been made by Vieta to table the matter. Is there a second for that motion?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Kevin to table the conversation. Um, Amy, would you please call the roll?
Jamie?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Diana?
Yes.
Motion has been tabled until, uh, next month. Thank you very much. Um, next on the agenda is, uh, Street Commissioner Klosterkamp, 2021-18 additional appropriation. Good evening, Mark.
Good evening. This is the second reading, uh, for additional appropriation. Uh, these are both insurance settlements that were received. Uh, so they were not existing funds that were there at the beginning of the year. Uh, the only way we could spend them for replacement equipment is we have to have them re-appropriated, uh, yet this year. And if the repairs are done, we will pay for the damages. If not, we will encumber them until the time that the damages are completely repaired.
Any other questions for Mark? This is the second reading for this. If not, we-
By the motion, we approve on the second reading?
Motion has been made by Jamie. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Rick. Amy, please call the roll.
Jamie?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Diana?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, we have ordinances, 2021-19, which is the salaries for utilities, second reading. Any further conversation or questions? If not, we take a motion to approve those.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's made by Kevin, seconded by Jamie. Amy, please call the roll.
Jamie?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Diana?
Yes.
2021-1, or dash 20, 21-20 is the city employee salaries for 2022. Is there a motion to approve that on second reading?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Motion's made by Kevin, seconded by Vieta. Amy, please call the roll.
Jamie?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Diana?
Yes.
Up next, we have Brian Robbins, under New Business with the Economic Development Corporation.
21-21.
Oh, I'm sorry. I checked too quick. 2021-21, 2022 elected official salary. Is there-
So moved.
Second.
Motion's made by Kevin, seconded by Jamie. Amy, please call the roll.
Jamie?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Diana?
Yes.
Now, under New Business, Brian Robbins, Director of the Decatur County Greensburg Economic Development Corporation with Resolution 2021-11, uh, for Experience Ag.
All right. Good evening. Um, the Economic Development Office, uh, did receive an SB1 for Experience Ag Incorporated. Uh, currently, uh, located in 920 Cat's Way Suite F in Greensburg. Uh, I have Jill, uh, here with me, uh, tonight to, to answer any questions. Uh, represents, uh, a first of four phases of construction. Um, uh, this one being a collection of offices and showrooms and a shop to be, uh, built, uh, over, uh, shall we say, off of Veterans Way. Um, it doesn't have a address just yet. It's just a parcel name, but it's, uh, over, uh, near the prospective, uh, hotel location. Um, just, uh, I guess it'd be northeast, is that correct, from the, the body water that's there now. Um, uh, the project will use three to four acres, uh, leave some room for growth. Um, and, uh, the value, the assessed value of the building in the, uh, in this middle is 2.6 million. Uh, and is that accurate? Yeah, okay. And they are currently requesting a 10-year abatement. Um, and they have, are retaining employees, uh, five employees through this project and, uh, will be adding two more employees. Um, Jill's on hand, so if you want to come up and say a little bit more, that'd be fine.
Hey, Jill.
Hello. How are you?
Good. Yourself?
Good, thanks.
So tell us a little bit about Experience Ag and what you all do.
Um, we are an ag technology company. So, uh, Travis Corman started the business back in 2013 and has grown it up very well. Um, our customer is farmers and we help farmers increase their yield by adding technology to their sprayers, their planters, their equipment, um, and try to make them more profitable. So, uh, we've, we've grown the business. We've been growing approximately 45, 50% every year. So, um, business is good. And, um, we just continue to grow. This year alone, we've added two new employees and we're looking to add potentially two to three more within the next year with the, with the new building. Um, a lot of what our issue is, is we have a small space right now and we've already outgrown it. We've only been there not even a year. And, uh, so we want to build a nice facility, plant our roots, um, and have a nice showroom where we can display our products, um, guide, guide our customers through the different technologies, how they can, how they can further their business and, um, how we can help them do that. So, we, we will have a nice, large building that will consist of a nice, about a 4,000 square foot shop, um, where customers can bring in their equipment if we need to work on them. Or we also, we actually, now, we go out to the farm right now and work on the customer's site. Um, but we'll have some offices and a nice showroom. So, that's kind of our phase one of the project. Phase two, we're looking at, um, a two to three year span where we want to, um, put up an ag museum, event center. Um, so that is, uh, already in the process of us working on getting something, um, figured out as far as the legal paperwork and, um, working with, um, architects to design something that will, um, look very nice for our community and, and hold a lot of different special needs that I think that we've all been wanting to see for quite some time. So, we felt an ag museum and that center would work well with the nice, the, the, the dynamic of our building with us being the future of ag technology. We also would incorporate the history of ag. So, we thought it would be a, a really nice offset. So, right now, that's our, um, phase one, phase two plans. We still would have additional ground after that. We did purchase 20 acres. So, um, we have approximately 10 acres after that that we can expand on, um, you know, and kind of see where that goes at that time. So, we are asking for the, the 10-year abatement on our building as of right now. So, we're looking to have that done within the next year.
And just to clarify, this request is only for phase one, not-
That's correct.
Part two?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for Jill?
Brian, do you have a recommendation from the abatement?
Yes, the abatement committee met on the, uh, October 20th and reviewed the SB1 and according to the guidelines that were established. Um, and through the point totals added up, uh, they are suggesting a four-year abatement.
Or per the guidelines established, that's what the committee arrived at and that's what is being presented on a real property abatement of 2.6 million totaling $162,662 worth of estimated tax abatement savings?
And that is estimated?
Sure.
That is estimated.
Any further questions? Would entertain a motion to approve a four-year? Does anybody want to change that? Is that-
I make the motion to approve.
Motion has been made to approve a four-year tax abatement.
Second.
Seconded by Rick. Amy, please call the roll.
Jamie?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Diana?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Um, up next, Police Chief Mike McNeely, Resolution 2021-8, transfer of funds. Hello.
Good evening, Council. You should have received a memo from me in reference to 2021-8 Resolution. It's transfer of funds from the 300 series to the 100 series to cover, uh, overtime expenditures for the rest of 2021. Uh, if you have any answer any questions, I did list some other reasoning in that memo of why we had, uh, so much overtime spent this year.
I think this is a pretty common thing that we do-
Yes.
-annually as well. Any other questions? If not, we take a motion to approve 2021-8.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made by Kevin, seconded by Vieta. Amy, please call the roll.
Jamie?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Diana?
Yes.
Is that a first reading type thing, or is that, is that-
Transfer of funds just require one reading. It's not an additional. So, it's done.
Perfect.
Thank you. Uh, Chief Stermer is here this evening. We also have, um, some individuals from RQAW. So Chief, I'll let you introduce that. I think it's incredibly important that we point out right away, you're not asking for any decisions tonight. This is simply an information session.
That is correct. This is a, an informational session, a chance for, um, council to ask questions of the, um, design team, both the mechanical, electrical, plumbing, as well as the architectural team, the business team as well. Um, so, good evening, Council. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Jamie. I tried to get, uh, the document through the computer, but it wouldn't quite fit. So, there's a hard copy back here, uh, waiting for you when you return. Um, Council, you did see I put a hard copy on your desk, so it is a little easier to, um, see than some of the smaller figures that are up on the screen. Tonight we have Vaughn Wilson, who is a public safety architect for, um, RQAW, uh, along with Dustin, who is the, uh, mechanical, electrical, and plumbing guy. Um, they are here to present the findings of a summer study that was, um, done by the Board of Works, um, for our fire station feasibility. So, um, as we know, the fire station is, is old and aging. I identified that, um, last year. It was on our strategic plan to look at what type of options do we have available. Um, and the first step on that is saying, do we even have a problem? Um, so, um, we were able to go to bid with a feasibility study, uh, and these gentlemen here are tonight to actually just present the findings of that feasibility study.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Vaughn Wilson. Uh, like Chief said, I am the Public Safety Design, uh, Lead for RQAW, uh, and the one who, uh, led the facility assessment. Um, so like you said, we have completed, um, uh, and prepared the final report, which, um, hopefully you all have received in front of you. Um, if not, we do have more hard copies. Um, so, since this is a limited time thing, we've kind of reduced what you're looking at into a much smaller presentation, which will be on the screen here. Uh, so to get right into it, this is an outline of what we, uh, what we did. So, we were engaged by, by you all to study the current, future needs of the Fire Station 1. Uh, the goals of the study were to determine the 20-year space needs for the fire station by use of a facility assessment, um, conceptually define those needs to address by observing three design options, which is Option A, to renovate the existing station. Option B, to demolish the existing station and build a new station on the existing site, or Option C, to build a new station on a separate site. We also looked at the cost implications for each of those design options, as well as an anticipated project, uh, schedule. So, we did all that by breaking it up into four phases. Firstly, is the efficiency evaluation. Phase two is the building analysis assessment. Phase three is the, uh, recommendations and advisement, uh, by us. And phase four is the conceptual design.
One quick question. Is your executive summary in this packet?
There is. It should be toward the beginning.
Where?
It should be at the beginning.
Okay.
Yep. Uh, so initially, we sent the chief and crew, um, questionnaires to fill out about their station to send back to us, kind of what works, what doesn't, what do you need, what are you looking for, um, their, their opinion of the current station. Uh, we then had some, several follow-up meetings with them to, uh, confirm that information and to acquire additional information about the station. Uh, we then had a, uh, site visit where we went out, took pictures, assessed the existing conditions, uh, which you'll see in the current, or in the following slides. Um, and what, what you're about to see is broken up into different disciplines. So, we have the architectural evaluation, we have mechanical, electrical, and plumbing. Um, so to begin with the architectural evaluation, typically when we design new stations, we separate the building into hot and cold zones. Hot being the apparatus bay and apparatus bay areas. Cold zones being the living quarters, um, the administrative areas, all the areas that you live and work in. Uh, we separate those because there are, uh, exhausts, carcinogens, contaminants in the apparatus bay areas that you do not want to get into your living quarters, um, areas. Uh, the way we separate that is by, um, what we call an airlock, which is basically just a glorified vestibule. It's two sets of sealed doors. They're also pressurized so that even if the doors are both open, the air is going out to the apparatus bay and not back into the station. Uh, so with Station 1, they have, uh, several areas where it has a single or double, uh, door separating those two zones. And in the, the picture is showing the administrative area, which has no separation at all. So, that's, uh, a little concerning. For the turnout gear storage, we also like to have that in a separate room. Um, even when the gear is clean, it still off-gases those carcinogens and toxins that you don't want to get back into your station. So, we try to mitigate that as much as possible by having a separate, uh, room for that that's also ventilated. Um, so what you're seeing here is just, uh, turnout gear storage directly into the apparatus bay. Uh, this is the bunk room. There is no, uh, separation of spaces or privacy between the bunks. Uh, there's no separate bunk room for men and women. Um, and then, this is kind of example of one of those situations where the door is just, that's the only separation between the, the apparatus bay and the living quarters. The locker room is at full capacity. There's no room to grow. Uh, there are also several other miscellaneous storage type items in that area that's making it very cluttered. Um, there's also, again, no separation between men and women's locker rooms and restrooms. And then this just kind of speaks on the overall storage in general in the, in the fire station. Um, all the storage rooms are at full capacity. They're overflowing, uh, so much that they're having to use the part of an apparatus bay, like you're seeing here, um, to provide space for these types of, uh, miscellaneous equipment and, and whatnot. So that is the architecture. Dustin here is going to talk about, uh, mechanical, electrical, and plumbing.
Hello. My name is Dustin. I'm a mechanical design lead of RQAW. Um, talking about MEP, starting with fire protection and plumbing. So, the first picture on the top is looking at your existing water main service. Um, if we're to do any kind of addition, this doesn't currently have a water meter or backflow preventer, so that would have to be added to the system. Um, right now, there's no fire protection in the whole building, so that is a safety, life safety concern. Um, the bottom picture is looking at the floor drain in the apparatus bay. Um, a lot of these vehicles drip oil and right now, there's no oil separator. So, this is a environmental concern because it goes right into the city's sanitary system. Um, the top picture is just kind of showing the overall general condition of the plumbing, which you can just kind of see that everything's kind of getting old and needs replaced. Um, the bottom picture is looking at the rear exterior and kind of over time, this area has settled. So, you're getting a lot of ponding, which is forming a site drainage issue. Um, you're seeing concrete cracking and eroding from water damage. Looking at the domestic water fixtures, we did the site visit. A lot of these were backing up and you actually couldn't actually use them right now. Um, it, it kind of testifies about the fixtures themselves that need to be replaced, but also the sanitary system underground. And we'd recommend that, that whole thing needs to be scoped because, uh, we're questioning that there's not much life expectancy left of the whole sanitary system. Um, jumping to mechanical, the current, um, administration area is served by three fan coil units, which are like furnaces with associated condensing units. The newest one onsite is 10 years old, which means, um, the maximum life expectancy for all three units is less than five years. Um, the three condensing units, the picture on the bottom, two of them have, are 22 refrigerant. Um, this is no longer accepted by today's standards because it's an environmental concern. So, we'd recommend replacing of those as well. Um, the top picture kind of shows outside air louvers. Um, over the course of time, they've been capped off and you can kind of see that, the pink foam above the panel in the bottom one. Um, so now this facility has no ventilation, um, or outside air for the building. So, if you were to do a renovation, you have to bring it up to today's standards and provide, uh, outside air. Looking at the apparatus bay, um, the condition of the equipment is actually in fair condition. Um, there's gas unit heaters, there's climate vent or magnetogrip exhaust systems, um, and an air scrubber. So, this is actually still in fair condition and we don't recommend anything at this time. Jumping to electrical, currently this, uh, the fire station has a 40 KW generator. Right now, it's not reliable and it's also at full capacity. So, we do recommend upsizing and replacing. Um, looking at all the main distribution for electrical and all the panels, you're also at full capacity there and all the panels have kind of met their life expectancy as well. So, we'd recommend replacing. Uh, there's just more pictures of full capacity panels. Another concern is the IT rooms. Um, with new designs, we'd like a dedicated IT room. Right now, they've kind of just been placed where there's available space. Um, there's no dedicated, um, circuits for it as well. So, with a, a addition or renovation, we'd want its own room. This is picture of the existing light fixtures. Um, all of them are original to the building, incandescent or CFL. Um, with any kind of renovation, we'd recommend just going to LED for energy efficiency.
Jumping to Vaughn.
Okay. So, we take all that information and we create an architectural space program. The, I know it's hard to read, but the numbers at the top left, um, those lines are every single space currently in the building, uh, in the existing station. The column here in the middle, that white column, is, are the, uh, existing square footages of all those spaces. The gray column next to that are all the adjusted square footages that, uh, either we have said, "This works. We, we know it works. It should be more of this number," um, or what we've heard from the chief and crew of what they need. And then the bottom half are rooms that they currently do not have that they need in order to be operationally efficient. And the square footage is there. So, you can't really read it, but currently they have 8,000, around 8,000 square feet and they need, uh, just a shy of 21,000 square feet. So now that we know, um, how much square footage the new station should be, uh, we can look at those three design options that I mentioned before. So, just to recap, Option A is to renovate the existing station. Option B is to demo the existing station and build a new station on that existing site, or Option C is to build a new station on a separate site. So that lighter hatch is the existing station right now. The orange would be, um, what we would propose in order to, uh, meet that square footage need of 21,000 square feet. So this is an option we could do to renovate, is we could potentially grow the apparatus bay to the north and have a two-story addition, uh, to the southeast here. Uh, what that does is significantly reduces the amount of parking needed and, um, this is, the, the number of parking right now does not meet the, uh, requirements for what the, what the station needs right now. Uh, you'd have some, um, parallel parking along the alleyway here, which is not ideal, as well as, uh, this used to be angled parking up here and that would have to be turned into parallel as well. So, this is just an in, uh, option for, uh, for Option A. This is to give you a visualization of what that would look like in 3D. This is that existing station. And then, uh, we'd have an expansion here and an addition back here. Option B, to demo the existing station and build a new station on the existing site. Uh, so where the, um, existing station is now is a- So where the existing station is now is a pretty good option for this. So we would essentially just build new over where it is right now, except we would have a two-story or we'd have a story on top of the apparatus bay and then a two-story in living quarters and administration wing. And then you can see that brings back much more parking and this is the, this would meet the requirements of the parking. And again, just to show you, just massing wise, what that would need to look like. And then lastly, option C, to build a new station on a new site. Instead of having two stories, we've went with a single story here. It's a little bit cheaper to build a single story than two stories. So if it was, if it was a new site, we could potentially have a little more room to spread out and to maximize that. It'd need to be around two acres. So you could have your administration here in the front for the public face and then all the crew could park in the back here with their living quarters in the back with access to the apparatus bay. And again, that's what that could look like. And then we've also done a rough cost estimate of what all these three design options might potentially cost. This is a very high level cost estimate. There's a lot that we have not designed yet that, again, this is just a very preliminary cost estimate. So you can see the numbers here, A, B and C. And then down here, we've broken out per discipline, site, architecture, plumbing, mechanical, electrical, kind of how that breaks down. And then a bar chart to kind of show you visually where those range from. So option A is around 6.4, option B, 8.4, and then option C about 7.7. And then we have a general construction schedule showing how long each of those design options might take to build. They're all fairly similar, around four months difference. So anywhere between 14 to 18 months. And then we, RQAW put together a recommendation. So based on the information that you've heard today, RQAW recommends design option C. And this is why we have broken down each of these. So side wise, the existing lot has drainage issues and is not ideal for an addition. The new site will provide adequate room for the most efficient layout. Architectural wise, option C will provide the most cost effective solution for a new station as it has the most room for an efficient layout. Two-story structure is slightly more costly than a single story and the Greensburg Fire Department will be getting more building from design option C.
And then looking at mechanical, electrical, plumbing, it's kind of all the same for all three options because you're looking at even for addition or renovation, you need to replace the HVAC system to meet code. You've got plumbing center issues that need to be replaced. And then your electrical capacity is at full capacity. So if you're doing any addition, that needs to be replaced plus it's at its life expectancy. So our recommendation is to go with option C because that allows you to design a system for the new building that's not have the constraints of the existing facility. Plus you can now get much more energy efficient equipment with that.
And then lastly, since we picked design option C, we decided to take that massing model and create what the building could potentially look like. So obviously, we haven't had any discussions with the chief yet about facade aesthetic or anything, but this is just an option of what it could potentially look like, so.
Thank you, Brian. Chief, anything, council questions?
I'll take your questions first, I guess, before we kind of wrap up.
Have you given any thought to what you would do as far as a fire department if you decide to remodel the existing building?
So that's a very good question. We originally were in talks with using that small lot on the south there. And initially, I was told that that would be a viable option. I have since revisited that with this information and that is no longer a viable option apparently. So with that, that puts us back to the drawing board of included into the cost estimate you will see on options A and B, room four trailers and awnings and things like that. Right off the top of my head is we would have to basically take a lane of Michigan and potentially a lane of Walnut and block one lane off with chain link fence and build our station around that as construction goes on. There are no temporary structures though that do that. So that does add a, while it might not be a financial thing, it does add a increased inconvenience for that. Administration can go down to our training room too here, but that's a very small portion of what we do at the firehouse. So that does create problems that I think we have to look into before we move forward. These gentlemen are here tonight to answer any questions that you may have. The handouts obviously are yours to take to somewhat digest. It is just an information session. However, we need to start planning and thinking about what we are going to do. We have roughly, per the timeline, two years to have a discussion. Well, I guess less than that. But a discussion of what options we want to go with and how that will affect bond rates and et cetera as we come. But this tonight was really a fact finding mission to see whether there's agreeance or disagreeance with their findings. You know, I'm, it would be nice, the thing about option C is the fact that we can, we can maintain our building until this one is ready and then it's move in, move out. The others is a lot more workable or takes a lot more work as well as with 16 to 14 to 16 month construction, if those trucks aren't under or in a heated space, what do we do during the winter time? There's, it leaves a lot of unanswered questions that I don't have the answer to or like maybe it's just not possible. So I think that that is a, losing that potential layout system was kind of a blow to options A and B personally. It doesn't mean we can't be creative and come up with something, but I do think that it drastically limits our possibilities.
Do you actually have sites?
We do not. We have, we have, within my department, I have a gentleman who is versed in the GIS system and has been doing a lot of GIS analysis through drive times, coverage areas of where we're currently at with our station one and our station two, where the empty parcels are within the city of Greensburg that we would need so we can do those by space. And then we have started to kind of look at, okay, this is viable, this is not viable. Obviously, if it's out to three or out on Michigan, the state's not going to allow us to do a cutout right onto that. So is there, is there an auxiliary road nearby? Excuse me. We have that ready to present to you at your convenience through a digital model. We will be able to, or a work session, we will be able to bring our computer in, fire up the GIS system and actually show you this is what it does. By moving our station further north, I can tell you that that does eliminate almost 40% overlap in coverage between our station one and our station two, which I like because then it allows station one to have an area, station two to have an area and we're getting better coverage. We're covering the industrial park better. We run up to North Decatur, we're an aerial device for Clarksburg Fire, so that allows us better response times up there. As well as if we move further north, there's other, there's great arteries to get out to the interstate or 421 or 3, which we do still run auto extrication on all accidents within Decatur County. So having access to those arteries is very helpful. But currently where we're at is being right at an artery, on an artery, sometimes is also a hindrance just due to the lack or the amount of traffic that comes by there, especially our wide loads and our heavy loads that are under escort. There's no way to get around those.
Since you don't have a location for option C, I'm assuming you don't have any cost of land acquisition in option C?
We do not yet, Kevin.
Then assume that in options A and B, there's no dollar amounts added into those for temporary housing?
There is temporary amounts added into A and B.
Okay.
There is no land cost added into C and that's.
Breakdowns, where did you add that temporary? Because I always see site, architectural.
It's under architecture.
Each of those options, it'll say, I think, like replacement, it'll say cost for trailer or whatever. We are, we are waiting basically your advice, suggestions, blessing to start talking to people that have available land to get a cost. You know, that is going to be the number one thing. We could have put an amount in there, Kevin, but as we talked, we talked previously, it's just an unknown. You know, and by giving certain land, I don't want to, I don't want to give away where our certain land is because I don't want price to be inflated just because either. So there are, there are options out there that I do believe we should explore. And it's, you know, if we get a price, what is a good price? You know, and I don't, land nowadays is, you know, expensive like anything else. So, you know, direction from you would be, okay, this is, you know, how much? You know, at what point is it not worth it to do that? But so really looking for some guidance and suggestions from council kind of about next steps as we've done this and other things to set us in motion. I just don't, if it is a viable option for you guys, I don't want to see it stall.
Any questions of our QAW, they're kind of.
In the first part of the presentation, he's liked several times, you know, they don't like the not having a double doorway. I mean, liking it and state code that that doesn't mean to me are two different things. So on the, where you want the double doorway for, is there a state code that requires that now?
I don't believe it's a state code, it's more of a health, safety and welfare concern.
It's more of an industry best practice currently than it is. And state code is, we're, I think we're still operating under the 2012 state code. So state, when we talk about state codes, they take forever to catch up. Right, wrong and different. However, these, these of when he says we don't like or this, that and the other, they are taking industry best practice on building fire stations in our cancer numbers and things like that and utilizing those as what they like and what they don't like. If that helps a little bit. It's more of a best practice, hey, we're really starting to do this. Most, some states, majority of states have cancer presumption laws. So if a firefighter gets cancer, it's presumed that it happened on duty, which means it's a workman's comp claim, which means then the city's paying out debt. So by doing these best practices and saying, we are taking these, it allows the city to come back and at least say, we have done something. Maybe it isn't workman's comp. Can you prove that you've got, you know, exposure to X, Y and Z? And that's where it becomes an industry best practice between the, between the firefighters themselves and the administration, between that kind of give and take of that, of what is, what would be considered a workman's comp claim. Jamie, I don't want to forget you over there, I'm sorry.
Oh, you didn't forget me, I'm just listening in. I think there was a lot to absorb in the report. I don't know, I guess I just kind of want to spend a little more time going through it before I say, hey, I'd like to explore this option or this option. I also just don't want to see that, you know, we don't leave an empty building there in the middle of the community and, you know, I mean, I think there's some things we should think about that and consider that as well, right?
Right, so that, in option C, it is to be noted that that is to demolish that building, right?
I think we're going to run it big in the future to leave it operational.
No, we changed it to, did you make those changes?
Okay, so there, there was a suggestion or asked them to, and maybe it didn't get done, is to demolish that building and turn that into green space. If that was to happen and then it would be, it would be green space, still controlled or owned by the city as that is identified as a gateway into the community as it is, you know, all traffic is kind of funneled down that way. So on those things, yes, I believe that is something that, once we plan, that needs to be in there and identified of what are we going to do? So we don't have, you know, a blighted building or a building that, you know, very quickly is not taken care of, becomes blighted right at our city entrance.
How old is that building?
That building was built in 1975.
Any other questions for the chief or RQAW while they're here? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Up next, we have ordinance 2021, water rates under Donna Lecker, utilities manager. We discussed this last month, so here are the ordinances for consideration. Good evening, Donna.
Yes, good evening. Introducing water rate ordinance 2021-23, first reading. It's establishing rates for 2022, 2023 and 2024.
Refresh my memory, which one we have first, the water?
As far as.
What was on the agenda here? So the water and water rate. What is the annual increase? I don't, I forgot to bring my packet from the last meeting.
The increase was over a three-year span, 12.44%. So like 2022 would be 4.15% increase on the water.
I'm sitting here looking at the fund report. And I, there's a lot of funds that are labeled like 901, 904, 905, 906, 907. Wow, and it's called Bank One, it's got 1.48 million in it. And then the sewer, when there's 950, 51, 52, 2C1, it's got freaking eyes. Several others that have like 902 Utilities Clearing, 903 Water Meter Deposit, Water Bond, Water Debt, Water Reserve. Anyway, you take all those funds and add them up, the total's close to 20 million. So my question is this, do we need a 12.44% increase over three years with that much money in reserves?
The reserve funds are for paying bonds. So like Water Meter Deposit is customer deposits, that is customers' money. That gets paid back to them, that's not operating expense. The only funds that are operating expense are the 901 in that Bank One, I believe it is. Clearing is a dumping ground, if you want to call it that. That's where all of our collections go. At the end of the month, I transfer money out of that to, yeah, that's just an in and out, that's a pass through. The same with sewer, all of, what is that, Bank Seven? I'm not sure.
Yeah, it says Utilities Clearing on Bank Seven.
Okay. Yeah, the Utilities Clearing is a pass through. And that is customer deposits to hold on their account until they move out or have good credits established.
And the others like 19, 20, 21, those are, that's just held there to pay on bonds?
It's for bonds. We have to, that money gets put into those funds by our operating accounts. So the operating accounts are what are in need of an increase. We have like a rolling capital improvement plan that we stay on top of all of our capital needs and that's what the rates are funding operations.
Same for Bank 29, that's for paying, those are just a Water Debt Reserve, Sewer Debt Reserve.
Yes, that would be, we have to have a certain amount of money in there to cover debt just in case.
125%.
Correct, yes, yes.
Carries 125%?
We have to have that much in reserves, yes. Like to be able to operate, I think it's 60 days.
So if you exclude all those, you still go back to Bank One and Bank Two, which have some pretty good balances out. So I guess, I understand the need to watch our rates, do the studies. I mean, we all got caught off guard with trash pickup that happened to hit everybody with $12 all at once and we hadn't, we hadn't looked at increasing those funds for years. But I guess I go back to, do we need 12.44 in each one of these? Or could we back that down to six or seven percent over three years and still be?
I don't think you have 12.44 in each one of them.
No, it's over three years.
It's phased in and before.
Over three years, it's like four percent a year. My point is this. My point is, is what if, could be, is it possible to take that 12.44, drop that back, so instead of 3 or 4% a year, we're looking at 1 or 2% a year, and still maintain the reserves where we need to, and so forth?
With this 4.15%, we have a cost of living, basically, 3% built in as well, so the rest of it is capital needs. The capital needs could be looked at and pushed back or whatever, but that would be where you would start cutting, is like your capital projects. And the water plant superintendent and the sewer plant superintendent direct that. It's on our needs and staying on top of our infrastructure and our, our needs.
And they've laid those out historically for years.
Yes, that's the way we do it.
Right.
We try to stay on the three-year rotation to keep everything at a minimum and also stay on top of our assets. You're welcome.
And I will, just to, for the council's information, I based this ordinance off of the last rate increase ordinance that was drafted in 2019. There are some slight changes, there's an additional section related to bulk water sales, because that did not exist in 2019, but the new, the new water in station.